All right, Doral.
Hey, Bob. I'm glad you're here.
We can hold a meeting before they get here, huh? For sewer, septic oriented homes. And that has been changed now as those homes will be tied into sewer line. So there was a portion of those lots that were designated as drain fields. And drain fields are no longer needed, so those become potentially areas that they could build on within the setbacks. So that was one of the primary reasons for wanting to amend some of those lots. Not all of them were amended that way, but some of them were. There's also some that are critical that are included on the final plat to alert the residents or those owners there having to do with the issues. A couple of them, for example, mentions the rear setback line is limited to 150 feet from their frontage unless additional fire protection measures are provided as defined in the Woodland Hills City Development and Construction Standards. Refer to the fire protection line map. So there is a limit, and I don't think that statement was included on the original plat, but they're put on notice if they're going to change their house and move it further back into the back portion of the lot, then they may face this issue and have to put another fire hydrant along the driveway proportion so that it does not exceed 150 feet from the furthest corner of the house. This is over on, part of it is on, off of Lofer Drive, back where the Northview Circle is. There's two cul-de-sacs in there. It's also one of the areas where they did a lot of work this summer because of the work that needed to be done to...
And Anderson is the beginning of?
Yes, yes, back behind there. Talks about all construction. I think this was on the original plat as well to conform to the approved Woodland Hills Development and Construction Standards and pertinent ordinances. This is another area that's been added. Building permits on lots with slopes greater than 20% shall only be issued after meeting all hillside development requirements as found in the Development and Construction Standards of the Woodland Hills City. Lots with slopes greater than 35% must receive approval from the Planning Commission and City Council before issuance of a building permit. At the time that this was modified, the Development and Construction Standards were, the hillside development was in the Development and Construction Standards. They've since been moved into the ordinance on subdivisions. So it doesn't make any, they were moved over, it doesn't make any difference where they are, but they have to comply with the slope standards that the city has. And it says, "No more than 25% of the lot area shall be allowed to be combined or covered by a building or a structure." That's new as well. We're finding some of these smaller lots, the R119 zone. None of them have gotten over the envelope, but some of them are kind of pushing it. So we want to make sure that the developer, the lot owners, understand that they can't put more than 25%, more than 25% of the area of the lot can't be covered by a home. So those are the general changes that were made to this, to this final plat. Kind of enlarging the building envelope in some areas because of the, no need for the sewer. Septic tank sewer system, that was the primary reason. So I don't know if Kim was going to be on Kim's phone?
Yeah.
She represents the developer over there, from what I understand. Is that correct, Kim?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything more to what I've said?
No, the only thing I have is a question. We got letters from SESD and also from Dominion saying, you know, that they will serve the area. I was just wondering, when I talked to SESD, they said that, like, when the road improvements were done, fixing the road, they said that the electrical was not pulled to each of the lots like it was supposed to have been. And I'm just, I'm wondering whose responsibility is that? Who's going to take care of that? They seem to think it was the city. I don't know who is responsible.
I would need to follow up with both the engineers and LEI on that matter. I seem to remember some discussion about it, but I think the lines were laid or the conduit was laid, but possibly the lines weren't pulled through the conduit. Jody, do you remember at all on that over there is the rework was done with the road? Whether the conduit was laid for SESD for each of those lots?
You can't hear Jody.
Does that answer that question for the time being?
I didn't hear what she said.
Okay, she thinks the lines were laid, but there may be some issue with the laying of, excuse me, the conduit was laid, but there may be some issue with the pulling of the lines through the conduit to some of the locations. So that's something that we will need to follow up with and work with the developer and see where the responsibility that lies. We should be able to find out in the next day or two, so we'll, we'll address that. But you do have the well-serve letters from SESD that they, they will service the
Yes.
electricity to those lots, so. All right, anything else, Kim?
Um, that's it. That's it.
All right. Do any of you have any questions on that? Again, this is an amendment, amended plat to that one that was done years ago. Correct. And some on Maple Ravine. The shaded ones are the ones that were, that have been amended.
Actually, unshaded ones. There was like two on Maple Ravine and one, then the rest are all on Northview Circle.
Okay, and I'm confused because I, I see three on Maple Ravine.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. There were three on Maple Ravine.
But I understood that one of those, the one that, those three, one of those three was not involved in the amendment. And that's why I guess I made a...
There are three involved in the amendment on Maple Ravine.
So lots one, two, and three?
Correct.
Okay. I was misinformed. So then there's only two on Northview Circle that are not involved. The rest of the, of the clear lots are, correct?
There should only be one on Northview Circle that is not involved.
Okay, there's a triangle there that's shaded, so maybe that's, that's, oh, it's a drainage judgment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just 16 that's not included.
Okay. Okay, stand corrected. We did have a building permit plan requested from the owner of Lot 1 that we held up on because of this issue. He wanted to move the home further back, but in doing that, he would end up in the drain field.
Yeah.
Hold.
They're the ones who started this whole thing, so.
Yeah, straight there. You're right. We put that on hold till they've done a slope analysis and everything, and the LEI has reviewed that. And I, somebody, I guess, miscommunicated to me because I thought the number one lot was not involved in that, but they are, so.
Yes.
Okay. So any other questions on that? Now I'll take a motion to approve this amended plat.
I'll move that we recommend approval of the amended plot from out notes in states.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we'll, so we'll be in touch with you and find out what that issue is with SESD. Thanks, Kim.
Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
This will go to City Council now from us. So there'll be a second, second weekend, April, when they will have their meeting. And we'll have that issue worked out before it goes to City Council.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Item three, review and recommendation for combining lots four and five in Four Seasons, plat A. This is a request that's been made by the lot owner, Michael DeShane. I don't know if he's on tonight.
We have that letter that Jody put on.
Yes, and the issues that LEI had, those have all been addressed on the new plat. Primary concern is the setbacks. They've been corrected. 20 foot on one side and 15 feet on the other. So just to clarify, he owns three lots. Two of them are being combined into one, and the other is a family member will be building on it. But he plans on building one structure on these, on these two lots. We do have the building plans, but we've held on to those and haven't processed those until this gets addressed. So, and I think the plat was given to you in your letters and so forth that you have. Yes, yep. So any questions on, on that from what you've received? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with that.
I move that we...
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. That then will go to the City Council for their review with our recommendation. Next item is discussion on the change on gating on public streets.
You've got building height here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. I skipped that one. I draw wrong, wrong line here. We'll eventually get to that. Okay, let's take the building height. Have some further discussion on that. I know Severin has sent in a thought on some rewording, and Lori has, as well as Ted, and I took a little stab at it as well. Let's have a discussion about it. Whoever would like to lead off. I know Ted's done some work and
I love Ted.
Analysis and things on it. So Ted, why don't you go ahead and make some, share some thoughts and comments?
Sure, sure. And yeah, I'll just take a couple minutes to kind of give you some thoughts that I've had. As I, I've thought hard about listening. Let's say I appreciate everybody's input to this, the planning commission, all your thoughts. Also from residents, all the thoughts and information that's been sent, and it's been helpful. Got to go through different thoughts and different ordinances and see what's out there. I struggled with this one quite a bit, trying to figure out how to get something that, I think this Lori said in one of her, you know, really, I don't remember the word, but uses a house construction to enhance the landscape, the visual scene, what they call the view scheme.
To maintain the beautiful views, scenic backdrop, and mountain forest character of Woodland Hills.
Yeah, so I thought that was beautiful, Lori.
Was.
And trying to figure out things that's, so let me tell you about a couple of quick things I looked at. I took various, just random houses through the city. And I looked at some down in Summit Creek and some up in here. I compared them to, I took our current ordinance and what's proposed. And the short of looking at those is that under our current ordinance, houses can really be built still even taller than 35 feet, right? Because that's the midline. In fact, the mention, there's, you know, a few houses that are approaching 50 feet tall, but they still meet the ordinance, especially on flatlands. And I took some, just some assumptions of a house footprint, made some assumptions on a roof pitch, and calculated a percent slope where there may be a, the proposed ordinance actually would be more limiting on the building height than the current ordinance. Roughly came out to six, seven, eight percent, just depending on kind of the numbers you use for roof pitches and stuff like that. So for homes that are six, seven, eight percent, built on slopes of six, seven, eight percent or less, the proposed ordinance actually will restrict the heights more because it goes to the highest roof pitches and peaks versus the median. So it actually gets a little more restricted.
What? Say that again, Ted.
Okay, so if you have a lot that is sloped at six, eight percent or less, the proposed ordinance will actually reduce the height of the house overall versus our current ordinance.
Right.
Because of where you measure to for the height. So, and then when you get over slopes of that percent, is where you could, you could technically build a roof that would be, or a house that would be a little higher than what the current ordinance would allow. But our current ordinance doesn't, when you get in those steeper slopes, doesn't allow for building what I call with the slope of the ground as well. Because you're basically limited to a line that's a straight line, measured from the lowest natural point. So if you're trying to build up a slope, you're limited on how high you can go up that slope before you have to start cutting away the hill. Which I also don't think enhances their view scheme. When you start cutting away hills and building good walls. So what the proposed ordinance does is allows you a little more flexibility to build with the slope of the ground, which I like better. The, still, the one thing I struggled with a little bit is someone still could come in and basically cut away the hill. And now they're sort of building with a flat roof height. You've got one on an angle, so if they cut away the hill down here, they could technically build a house that's taller. Now, would it be taller than, you know, right now, they could build something up to 50 feet in our? Would it be taller than that? I don't know. In the end, I thought, really, the proposed ordinance probably...
Just to clarify, because they're going down, they're still, from the natural grade, they would be only 35 feet above that.
Correct. From the natural grade, they would only be 35 feet. It doesn't prohibit them from digging down to match what may be the lowest point on their building. So they could really kind of build a flat spot, cut away a hill, and then go up. You know, pitch of a high house, which, you know, effectively they can now too. So I don't think, so I like the proposed ordinance in the fact that it allows people to build on the slopes. And I think it works better than our current ordinance to allow that. And I think it actually, when you get into more shallower slopes, it actually will keep, you know, the heights down versus our current ordinance. Now, the thing I still struggle with is just that cutting away a hill, which really can technically be done under either ordinance right now. If you look at Summit Creek, and which is one of the houses I've looked at, started comparing, they do a really nice job of being able to build, especially if you look off the west side of Summit Creek Drive, some of those houses. They do a nice job of building those houses on the slopes. And they almost, if you look at it, they almost kind of go with the slope, and so it doesn't look like a big house, just stuck out there and going nowhere. It really looks, be quite nice. And I actually took one of the houses down there, got a ruler, and took some elevations and et cetera. And depending on how you define, and this is one of the reasons I didn't like the definition that we have right now in our building height of the story. Because that is a little bit ambiguous, depending on how you define the basement, which can be tough to tell unless you actually go out and verify the contractor, build like a plan, and you're able to bear upon the plan that it meets our current requirement for a story or a basement. If you look at one of, I looked at one of their houses down there. It's roughly from their lowest elevation of their house up to Summit Creek Drive, which is basically a flat spot from the drive that comes in the flat. I want to say it's 25 feet. And they did a good job of building the house up the slope. Depending on how you count that bottom level, it could either be a story or a basement. I would think it was a walkout basement. It would depend on how, if you have to check and finish writing this. I thought it had a glass or something.
Didn't say that.
Well, or right now, the ordinance that says a basement is technically defined. If you take the house, and if the average slope is less than 4 feet... the house and if the average slope is less than four feet, it's a basement around the house.
No, it doesn't say that. It says four feet below the adjoining finished grade.
Average.
No, it doesn't say average. It just says four feet below the adjoining finished grade. And the finished grade is at the front of the house, where it's defined now.
Okay, so if you talk to, okay, I got this report. He was the one that was telling me it was the average finished grade around that house.
It doesn't say that in the ordinance. I, I argued that with Corbin last week and he tried to show me and he could not show me.
So, the basic definition, which used to be in one of your proposals, I don't can now, would be the space of the building where the floor level is more than four feet below the adjoining finished grade.
So the floor level, you Jason, so, is that, it doesn't say that's taken at the front of the house or...
And then there's the definition later, it says finished grade is measured at the front of the house.
So, either way, and that's, 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 that's right, because then you would say this is basement, even though it looks like a third story. Either way, and that's not really kind of a funny thing, is that it, it looks like three stories going up, which is why I don't, I don't like the definition, he considers in the building height. I think that's just...
Well, and I agree, I don't think we ought to have stories in there.
But they did a nice job of building up the slope. And if you look at that, twenty-five foot difference, they technically, I don't know that they would have met our current ordinance without digging out a portion of that hill. So, which they did do, they built up the slope, which was great. So I, I still struggle a little bit with how do we, how do we allow people, give people that flexibility, which I think the proposed ordinance does give them more flexibility to build with the slopes. But do we want to, and I'm saying I've made a conclusion or decision or anything like that, limit how much they can dig out of it, you know, because technically they could come in and dig out a whole hill if they want. And I don't think that's any better situation than building a house that's a little higher than mine. And I know Lori, you know, one of the Park City users, they kind of will limit how much they could actually dig out, so they can't take out twenty-five foot of the hill, you know, they could take out four or six feet of it or something like that would be about there, which then would guide them up the hill, so they can't take out, you have to step or puttings. I haven't thought much about that. I just, I, I, I struggled that all week, how do we still keep people who are biting out a whole hill besides how the people have? But I've seen some pretty big debate about that. And I don't know if that's any better than...
There are several lots, we're, we're talking about Summit, that are on the north side of Summit Creek, that are on the west side of their amenity center, where, where we looked at, where there's that common driveway that's off on the high side, so it slopes down to Summit Drive, and so the houses that are built along there are ones that would benefit from what you're saying, building up the slope. Whereas you were, you were looking at ones on the other side of Summit that are, I guess, technically building down the slope.
Right, right, and they did a good job.
Yeah, and, and these then are building up the slope, but it would allow them to be able to do that and stay within that building height envelope that we're talking about, the parallelogram.
Right, and that's why I liked, and going through the whole analysis, now this really only applies to things that are over six, seven, eight, ten percent, somewhere around there, right? Because anything less than that, and these roof heights are actually even down versus our current, because of just, and then that out because of the median where you measure to.
Right.
It's when you get in these steeper ones where potentially they could come in, I like the idea of giving them the option, they still wonder, is there a reason or need, do we need to have something so they can also dig away an entire hill?
I know the Summit Creek with their CCNRs, and as well as their, they have to, they approved their building plans over there as well, for individual homes.
Right.
And they're going to make every effort to build with the slope, build that, that's what they want to do and that's, one of the homes that they're going to have designed over there will do just that.
And I think that's great, that's the way you want to do it. So how do we encourage that without being so restrictive? I'm also not a fan of putting so many restrictions on people, that we limit it to one style of house, is all they can do. Then you turn into a particular subdivision, which I don't, I really like.
Is your microphone?
Yeah, someone's saying they can't hear me very well.
Lori?
And I really like where we're at with the proposed ordinance. I like what it, I think it gives us better restrictions on ladder lots to the height, but allows for building on slope lots better without digging away hillside, it's just a matter, do we need to just address that one? I struggle with all this, I don't know how to answer this, oozing question. Do we need to somehow give them something there so they're not also digging out from it? Or does that really matter?
I know with our current ordinance, depending on the slope of that hill, if it exceeds a certain percentage, they can't disturb that. Thirty, thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And between twenty and thirty-five, they have to get engineering approval to do anything with that slope.
Yes, there's no prohibition, but if it can be properly engineered, then they're allowed to build on that. Lori?
Um, what? I, I agree with everything that Ted has said, and I had just taken what you, the definition that you wrote and kind of tried to adjust that. I, I think that if we can maybe take Ted's definition, I, I still like having a limit on the grading a way of, of a hill. I, I don't know that that would happen very often, but I think it might be good to limit it somewhat. And the, this phrase that I pulled from Park City said four vertical feet, but we could put that at something different if...
So, one of Park City's ordinances indicates that no more than four feet can be dug?
Well, let, let me just read, it says finished grade must be within four vertical feet of natural grade.
Which you basically can't build or cut more than about four feet. I think four feet here would be a little bit.
Maybe we would do ten, I don't know, but, but to limit it somewhat...
That would limit the ability to dig away twenty feet and then have your finished grade twenty feet below. I don't know.
How would that, how would that be worded? How, how would that best be worded as, say, at the end of the ordinance, no more than, no more than ten feet could be excavated?
Finished grade can be no...
Must be within X feet.
I'm wondering if, if that shouldn't be a separate, I mean, you've got the height component, maybe that should be number one or number A or whatever, and then a two or a B could include the, the amount of material would be taken away. Because to me, they're, they, they do mix, but they are too separate.
So the first question I have is, even before determining the height, is it something we think about or consider doing? Is that still going to give people enough flexibility to build on some of those? If it's something here and then, then you can figure out, is this something we want to do, then we can, we can hide it there.
Yeah?
Also, in your definition, did it say anything about antennas or chimneys being over the seven? Got that up on my definition.
The roof peak or ridge.
Okay.
I mean, that way, other things can be, but the roof peak or ridge. Concern I always have, we do this in, is if you start listing what, then if you covered everything, if you just say what can, then, you know, it's not just...
A lot of other definitions I've looked at, just say shooting, you know, those chimneys and the like that exceed the top of a ridge line, so they, they don't include the top of those in their calculation, so it's best just to not address it, because soon as you do, then you've got some, what did you need to talk about? You know, you want to whether it's thirty feet tall, well, we didn't include weather vanes, you know, sort of thing.
Okay.
I think if we just keep it to the ridge line, or the, yeah, the ridge line of the roof, then that's...
That's what can't go above.
Yeah, people aren't going to put a twenty-foot, you know, chimney on top of their, of the ridge line. They're going to put it above it a little bit, likely, so that they've got the, yeah, draw for the fireplace and things like that, so. I think it would be best probably not to include that language in whatever we decide.
You know, I've, I've walked around Park City quite a bit and have noticed the houses that are built on a relatively steep slope. There's a road up here and a slope down and a road down here, and their houses build along that slope. Now, I've never been in any of those houses, but given what Lori had found, it must be a situation like that, because they've cut in a little bit and they've cut in a little bit and then cut in a little bit. And, and so they basically had three levels that they were building up upon to maintain that, what Lori found.
Which is building with the, it's kind of how you build with the slope.
Right.
You're cutting it a bit, putting in your puttings and amplification and stepping, as we call it, that's, that's why in my house, I step it up, slope with my puttings.
I mean, the first house I ever owned in Northern California, there was a ground level that had a garage. We actually went forty-one steps up to the front door and in between about twenty-some steps, there was the basement and there was an entry to the basement. And then there were two stories built above that, and so it was on a pretty steep slope. And that's, you know, kind of what they, they dug in for the garage and then they dug in and built up from the, from the basement.
That's, and that's kind of in my house, that's why I said four feet may be a little restricting, because even on my, I had to step down about ten feet just so I could get my walkout placement. Then I stepped my next foot in about ten feet, five feet, to get to the next main level. Where I had to cut away, my feet to get my basement, but then when my ground got put back, you know, my finished grade was almost a slope of all the ground around. Finished grade matches kind of slope. Which, which is, to me aesthetically, how it should be.
And, and I guess I'm not as concerned about how far the canyon to the hill, as long as you don't see it.
Well, that's the point, see, right now, the way you're, as you could...
Yeah, well, and if, if they don't see it...
Well, if you come in and you say, say you got a low point here, low point here and the ground slopes up like this, and the road's out here, you come in and you dig away all this hill and you build a house like this, you're going to see a big house that maybe has a stepping roof, maybe the bottom level of the house is on one level, you have one house, you know, the hot house on this side is much taller than this side, but you're going to see the entire house. And then maybe then you have a basement below that, slope below ground.
And what I'm concerned about is if they dig in and we don't see it, that's okay if it's submerged and in the ground, but when you dig away and have exposed areas that are visible, that's what I don't like.
And that's where, I think with something saying no more than whatever, ten feet, then that would almost mean they would have to go and then step up the hillside and then go and step up the hillside or, or whatever it takes for the house, or they're only going to cut in ten feet and then they step off and step up again, maybe you're not seeing anything. Just throwing it out there, I don't know if I have a, a way, just other, I like to see these homes built with the natural grades of the hillside. And really, like I said, this only is probably going to apply to those lots over a certain Which, quite a few of them do.
So then, do we have a reading that we could listen to to make a decision? Let's, let's look at what Ted put together and then see if we want to try to merge that with some of the comment that Lori has had and see how that would, how that would I just kind of taking a first stab at it. So looking at, looking at what Ted done, "Got a height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade plane directly below the point. The natural grade plane is a reference plane determined by..." We want to look at inserting...
Maybe that's where it's at, any point.
"The natural grade plane is a reference plane, what it says now, determined by a straight line from the natural ground level adjoining the building exterior on opposite sides prior to any construction or land disturbance."
Okay, do we need to specify a low side and a high side, so they're not taking two high sides or two low sides?
It's the opposite side of where you're taking that point from. And the reason that is, and it says by, at the adjoining ground, and this was actually a reference that found in another ordinance, and the reason for that is because that can be any point of the house, so basically you take any point in the house and it has to be the opposite side, and so basically instead of just have a straight line, which you're doing, you're building a prism. Now, prism is never used, that makes sense. It's a little confusing when you try and say prism, because that's confusing. This says any point adjoining the house, you take a reference point on the opposite side. Maybe it needs to say any and all points of the adjoining house with a slot opposite of that location. Because then every inch around the house is what you're looking at. You're basically building a prism and then you're raising that prism up to thirty-five feet.
Yeah, because I feel like it's just saying two points, not, yeah.
And that's what it says, which is adjoining the house, because at any point adjoining the house.
So you're talking about a platform.
Yeah, you're basically building a ceiling instead of a line.
So how about all points instead of any?
Now, we, we use that in the first sentence, we, maybe you can use it again.
Yeah.
"The height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade plane directly below that point. The natural grade plane is a reference plane determined by..." We want to look at inserting...
Maybe that's where it's at, any point.
"The natural grade plane is a reference plane, what it says now, determined by a straight line from the natural ground level adjoining the building exterior on opposite sides prior to any construction or land disturbance."
Okay.
So that's a natural adjoining, straight line opposite that. So anywhere natural ground adjoins the house, you call it the opposite.
So if I, my ground here...
Can I make a comment?
Take the line from here to here, that's different from the line from here to here, we've got a whole, somehow we've got a state, we want a whole plane.
This is saying, is you're taking a point here, here, point here, here, point here, here, you're basically building a prism all around you by taking any point...
I don't, I don't think it's saying that, I, that's what I wanted to say, but I think we need to specify that better with the wording.
Excuse me, can I make a suggestion?
Any point.
Ooh, I heard a voice.
This is Bob Ottley.
Sure, Bob, go ahead.
What if you identified it as the building envelope and make the building envelope three-dimensional? X, axis X, Y, and Z. X and Y is left, right, north, south, whatever, and Z is vertical. By just making the envelope three-dimensional instead of two.
Can you hear me okay, Bob?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
I think one of the challenges we have with building envelope is we talked about last week is what is the building envelope? And that's why we use adjoining ground instead of a building envelope, building envelope. Cause then we have to find what the building envelope.
Cause in some instances, Bob, uh, building envelope is designed, is, is defined as on a lot, anywhere that the house can be built. Uh, a building footprint specifically is better defined, but I'm not sure that is clear enough too. But an envelope is, you can put your building anywhere within that building envelope. So that's the problem with using the building envelope terminology versus something else. But the point, the rest of your point is, is well made and that's what we're trying to, trying to articulate.
If there is a valley or a dip in the lot, then that dip, that lowest point, vertical thirty-five feet is the top of the envelope. If there's a hill on it, then from the top of that hill or wherever you measure on that hill, straight up thirty-five feet is the top of the envelope.
And that's why we're using grade plane because we're trying to eliminate having a plane that's constantly going, looking like a, uh, heart monitor. You know, going up and down.
Why, why do you want to eliminate it? I thought that's what the advantage of this was is to, to take and force the, or give the opportunity, let me say it positive, give the opportunity of the home to flow with the natural contour of the lot.
It is. But what if you, for example, have a wash on a lot that's thirty feet deep? Now, you take your grade plane or you take your grade from that point, your house can only be five feet above the natural ground.
At that point.
Uh, yes.
Which is available. So what we're trying to do is come up with basically a straight line grade.
Okay.
One side of the house to the other, make that your, your, your.
In my mind, a straight line plane allows it to be taller. If you have it at any point along the natural grade, then you are forcing it to be a little bit shorter, aren't you?
Well, but it can also force it to be unbilled. Is, is the challenge that we run into. So, and, and really we're talking about the building will actually be sitting there. So what you're gonna see is those two points outside of the building where the natural radius. That's really what you're worried about being your height above those two points.
Okay.
Not necessarily where the rest of the building is gonna be sitting.
Yeah, I, I just wonder if you, uh, were able to get a contractor that had to do that and what, what, or an architect. And they, what, what is, what, what is the clearest message that they would want written that, that would fill, fulfill what you're trying to do? Uh, because I think if you got them to put it in their words, it might be, uh, easier to enforce or easier to understand. Maybe somebody like Steve Dickert can help with that kind of thing. I don't know.
Well.
Thanks for, for entertaining my thought.
Yeah, way to throw me out there, Bob.
Any chance that I can, Steve, I'm gonna put you under the bus.
Yeah, you, you know, I, I got a lot of, I got a lot of tire marks, but hey, the, the one thing I, I would suggest is maybe instead of, um, the planning commission trying to figure out the wording, I think a fifteen to twenty-minute meeting with the city attorney would allow him to, uh, to do this for you instead of you guys trying to figure out any and all or any and all or this or whatever. Let, let him try to do the wordsmithing for you. I think i- in principle, i- if you understand it, let, let him do the heavy lifting on the, uh, wordsmithing stuff. So that's just my thought. I think it might save you some time as you're going through this meeting today.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, the dilemma that I have is, like you said, if, if you have a piece of property that is six or seven or eight percent, it's not a big challenge. The dilemma comes when you have a piece of property that isn't like this or like this, but one that's like this. Well, but, but the point is, in, in this, in this example, and this is one, one part that I'm not sure about Ted's definition. Because this is the high natural point. This is the low natural point. This is the plane, the grade plane that goes up thirty-five feet.
The way it's a tendency to view it is that.
Just to go from this.
I understand, but, but once again, any and all points, if this is the way that slope is in terms of all the, any and all points, then that's the slope you're talking about. And that's where it has to be within that envelope or whatever with the parall- I call it parallelogram.
Well, maybe what we're trying to do is, is equate this point with this one and this one with this one. Because even if the, the slope or the gradient is skewed like that, you're still going to have a parallel issue here and here.
Well, you need three points to define a plane, but you have to be able to satisfy all of the points, not just three that you pick.
Maybe it just isn't.
Well, then, then of course you realize that, that the slope or the gradient from here to here is, is greater than the one from here to here.
That's where they gotta be opposite each other.
So you're looking at ninety degree, a ninety degree comparison as opposed to whatever that is.
Maybe, maybe Steve, right, maybe we need to, you know, get a legal opinion on actually wordsmithing, what would always. As engineers, the question we always ask when we're writing specs is what's gonna hold up in court?
Well, the, yeah, the. I, I don't think an attorney can do better than an engineer.
I.
You guys are like the deal.
Well, I, I know that, but again, talking about language, I don't want. Sorry, Steve, but I don't want legalese in this document that nobody understands, especially a contractor. I would rather have a contractor, uh, I think Bob mentioned that, that, that deals with this sort of thing could say, oh yeah, that, that should be whatever is my feeling.
Now, I've, I've talked to a designer who does, who's working with Summit Creek and he designed many homes in Park City. And his comment to me was, he didn't think he could define it any better than what the Park City ordinance is. I think we, we see a few anomalies with that that we're trying to address to tighten that up even more. But, but in his view, he, cause I asked him, I said, how, how can we improve on this? He says, I'm, he says, I, I don't know that I can. That's what he told me. So.
It, yeah, I guess my, my, wait, excuse me, but I, I think my point with reaching out to the city attorney wasn't to make it legalese, right? This, the, the city attorney can help you craft the ordinance the way that other city ordinances related to height are constructed. Right? Knowing what the principle is that you want. And then I'd run it by the engineers, run it by the contractors. But at least I think they can be a good, um, starting point because their style will match the ordinance's style. Because the, the city attorney doesn't represent just you guys and then a bunch of, you know, non-cities. He represents a lot of cities. So if, if it was me, I'd go and take a look at his wisdom and see if that's a place to start. You know, start with Park City, have him get your comments, run it through him, have him drafted up, run it by LEI as, you know, as the city engineer, and then run it through Robert Nelson, run it through us and let's, you know, see if, you know, or, or other developers and, and see if you can get a coalition around that. But I, I think he can at least give you a good starting point. That's just, that's, that's my thought there. So.
So I asked them their thoughts on building height. Now they obviously do it for different cities and have different ways of doing it depending on the cities looking for. But that's perfect.
Yeah.
It's kind of some comments they, uh. It's something right. How they use your buildings and that, how they need your rights. Some of the ordinance they. But. But I hope, I, I'm like, I'd wonder if we're just getting too, or picking this apart too much. The idea is we wanna have a great plane and we want the house to stay. That natural break.
Yeah.
I think like Wayne suggested, picture's worth a thousand words. We can sit and describe and pick this apart all. Yeah, but here we just, here's what we're looking for. Give an example right in there. Me, when I'm designing stuff as an engineer. And I look at a detail, the only one a city wants, that to me, a lot more value than going to their spec book and trying to interpret their specs.
Much like our, the designs in our development and construction standards. Here's what a road's supposed to look like, you know, here's what an intersection looks like. All drawn out there. So I think that, that is needed in whatever we do come up with to show that. Have a picture. So.
And there, there were quite a few cities that had pictures in their ordinances. Yeah.
I, I don't have any problem with, with that. Uh, I still, I would like to come away though with a basic, and we can.
What we have.
Review some other, you know, get input, but let's, let's come up with, uh, what we feel comf- comfortable with. And, and I think there's something to, a little bit to what Ted said, maybe, you know, maybe there's, we just trying to do something that it, in our community, if we, if we had a bunch of flatland, it would be very easy to, uh, to say this is, this is what it is. But we're not like that. And, and maybe we just do the best we can and understand that. But again, take away some of the ambiguity that our current code has. Let, let me just go ahead and finish reading this and reminding us here. So, um, in order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of a roof, ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet perpendicular above the natural grade plane. Flat roofs must be no more than thirty feet above natural grade. These points are located on the site plan and the elevation to the natural grade plane directly below those points is subtracted from the elevation of the points along the ridges and peaks, thus indicating the height above the natural grade plane. That, that's a key, I think, to, to the measurement. So we're telling them where they measure from and to. And using this term, the natural grade plane. And that's maybe where we're getting hung up a little bit is how, how do we want to define the natural grade plane? So it's more identified and maybe we can do that with a picture. It would help too.
Lori? I just thought of one more concern. If we have a natural grade plane that's sloped, when you say perpendicular to it, I think we, you don't want perpendicular, you want direct, straight up, not. What, what did it say was perpendicular?
Perpendicular. It says no point of a roof, ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet perpendicular above the natural grade.
Okay, so thirty-five feet coming perpendicular is different from thirty-five feet going straight up.
I think that came from Park City. I didn't really treat that part.
No, the perpendicular part I think came from some comments that we got from, that we were talking about last week. The, um.
You know, the example though.
That's been, I, I inserted that. So the Park City ordinance.
And then the example that was in the Park City ordinance was really straight up. From this point, straight up.
Yeah, we need to say straight up directly above.
So you say straight up, something like that.
Yeah.
Straight line.
Yeah, not perpendicular because that's a different measurement. Right.
Straight line.
Straight up to the.
Put a plumb bob from the top of the ridge.
Exactly.
Down to that point.
Yeah.
Plumb bobbed line. From the grade plane.
So we take out perpendicular, I see that. So no point of a roof or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet above the natural grade plane. We want to say directly above.
Vertical?
Vertical two.
Or directly below the ridge.
It has to be a straight line or, cause we're not trying to measure perpendicular, but basically we're, we're taking a measurement. It's a straight line.
But directly below.
So it's either straight line measurement or vertical, straight line gives more descriptive a look.
As long as you say which way you're going straight.
Up or down?
Yeah, straight up, straight down, vertical, straight. I think all of those work. Yeah.
So no point on the roof or ridge on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet. It says above the natural grade crane, plane. So thirty-five feet ver- vertical? How do we want to reword?
In a vertical straight line.
No higher than thirty-five feet.
In a vertical.
In a vertical straight line.
Straight line above the natural grade.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's back up. Start over again. The height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade plane directly below that point. I think we're good with that. Yeah. The natural grade plane is a reference plane determined by a straight line from the natural ground level adjoining the building exterior on opposite sides prior to any construction or land disturbance. Maybe we'll come back to that. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of a roof, ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet in a vertical straight line above the natural grade plane. Flat roofs must be no more than thirty feet above natural grade. These points are located on the site plan and elevation to the natural grade plane directly below those points is subtracted from the elevation of the points along the ridges and peaks, thus indicating the height above natural grade plane.
And the line that we're looking at is not straight, straight or vertical plane of the slope with greater vertical to before the bottom.
No, we're, we're using contours. So those contours.
Right, but still. There's this slope. This is the peak. This could be no more than thirty-five people above this point.
To any point underneath that.
Remember the peak is. With that parallelogram. The way I've pretty described it is there is not just the peak, it's all roofs, ridges and peaks. So basically you're measuring every point along that roof. No point in that roof exceeding that, which should show up in the site to be showing. So it's almost an infinite number of vertical straight lines.
Yeah.
Through there, what it really describes.
Yes. And that's what Park City's ordinance in their way of saying it.
Yeah.
That's what they want to.
Which is what.
Represent.
Which is what I was kind of attempting to do, maybe needs to be reworded a little different by saying where the natural ground adjoins the structure on and the point opposite of that. It's trying to say you're taking an infinite number of points and you're building a plane that will be raised.
We need to describe that that way though, or just say any point up here directly below it. We don't care if it's like this, like this, whatever. Thirty-five directly below.
The grade.
Do we want to use that word or do we directly below, do the natural grade?
The only worry I have there.
Because remember the natural.
I know, I know. Yeah, okay.
We need to find.
Cause you can really live in some of the building, you're measuring to the bottom of a wash and they're doing, it's ten feet wide and you've got an eighty foot long house. You can limit someone to five foot house all the way across the lawn.
So I think that the problem we're having is with defining this natural grade plane. Where we've got this, or this, or, or that.
Yeah. With planes, limit him in all directions. Regardless, it's, you basically built this ceiling.
Yes.
Above your house, and at no point can you extend, go through that ceiling. It's trying, time trying. So it doesn't matter what kind of slope you're talking about. You can, you can exceed any, you can't exceed that ceiling.
But that natural grade plane wording does not identify to me that.
And that's where I think we gotta, we gotta.
So, yes.
The attempt was by saying, um, measure at adjoining ground at a point opposite. Was that you measure infinite number of points at the opposite point, all the way around the house. Where you build this plane around the house. And then you raise that plane thirty-five feet. But probably not describe.
Maybe that's where we need the, an architect or some other person who has dealt with that kind of thing. Like a math major or something like that to help, uh. How we, how we.
When you build a house, you're not going to build it on that, your house is going to end up like this. Or, and you could step it. But you're not going to have, like you said, you're not going to be building a roof eighty feet long like that. You may have a sloping roof and step it.
If we said. Any. Any natural grade on the footprint. Reduce it to a, what we call a natural grade plane. That. Helps some, not at all, but maybe part. As we are transitioning a bit, we're wanting. Understand that we're doing away with the peaks and valleys of what might be underneath it. I think we need some. Added help. With that part of. Okay.
We've got planner, hand architect. Maybe see what makes sense.
And we want it simple.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I don't want.
Contractor home.
Yeah, and what is that?
What a, what a prison is or anything like that.
Yeah, and that, and that's one of the reasons why I think. The tack that we're on with this new definition of building height is so much simpler. If we could just get the plane to define, it's so much simpler than stories and basements. And lowest natural and all that stuff that's in the old, the old one and like, like I said last week. You know, it defines the finished grade as the front of the house after settling. How do you give somebody a permit to build a house when you don't know how much it's going to settle in the front?
It's basically after a year.
Yeah, well, we gotta, we gotta give somebody a permit to build a house before they can do whatever they're going to do and let it settle. Now that.
I think you can add an exhibit, this really looks kind of.
Couple even?
Couple exhibits, yeah, I think that's really what's going to.
Yeah.
I concur. And we have a couple already, don't we?
Uh, yes, we do. We may want to, depending upon how this grade plane to define that, we may want to. Show that as some kind of a, a drawing too, that it's clear what, what we're trying to. Identify.
Good, I read his.
John Michael sent us an email.
I read his email.
He's an engineer.
Jody, can you? See if that email he sent, or just. Turn him on, John, John Michael? John Michael?
Hey there, yeah, I, uh, so I'm new to all this, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak, but. Um, so I am kind of a math nut and a structural engineer and a contractor, so. I, I think the word plane is not correct because a plane is defined by three points. And it's actually two dimensional, but it goes infinite in two dimensions. So I was thinking of the idea of using, uh, a line, because a line is defined by two points. And so, um. My thought that I emailed you was that, you know, no ridge, eve, gable, point of the roof can exceed. Thirty-five feet in height above the natural grade reference line. In any given cross section through the building. And above automatically assumes you're going straight up, you're going vertical, you're not going perpendicular. And then you go on to define the natural grade reference line. Is found by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building at the elevations of the natural grade. And then that, that defines. Any and all situation, I think.
That's kind of what we saw first. That was a reference. Point. Those are reference points. And then that, well, above the reference line is. The envelope, so to speak, that building could be built in. And until the, on a measuring terms of from the peak, straight down.
Straight down to that.
To that reference line.
I modified that picture bit for purposes of demonstration. And I don't know if you want a. dotted line through the building. One edge, the other. It was there. That, that picture originally depicted. So.
Like that in any given, in, in any given cross section through the building.
So I would almost suggest just a tweet there, maybe to. By saying any cross section, do I get a pick, cross section, or you say cross sections? Any given, maybe.
Well, it says no ridge, rig, gable shall exceed the thirty-five feet in any given, so I think that means everywhere.
In any given cross section.
Yeah, I like not saying.
Yeah, I believe there's an infinite number of cross sections.
It's complicated. If we just, as John Michael talked about, pick two points. The highest elevation that is around the structure. And the lowest elevation around the structure. And between those two points is. Grade reference line.
That's what I said before, and you didn't like my line, line.
Define the envelope, thirty-five feet up there, thirty-five feet up there, and connect, and you've gotten a parallel frame.
Okay, that's what I, that's what my line A and line B we're talking about.
Just a minute, just a minute, Laurie?
Oh, I'm sorry, just that, that's what my line A and line B were trying to illustrate.
Right. Line A.
Line B.
Line B.
High, low.
What if your highest point on this side of the house here? Other points on this side, but your heel's going.
That, that's why we, what Laurie talked about.
Yeah.
This is my house. Okay? The east side is the high point, it slopes a little bit across the front. But the low natural point is back on this corner. This side is pretty flat, it's high, and then it flops off. And if we have this straight up, this straight up, and this straight up, it's got to fit within that.
I'm going to throw one other condition out. While you're holding your paper, and. Just the answer, I don't, I, I don't have the answer, what if the house is, maybe this doesn't matter? What if the house sits like this at the front of the house?
That's the, the ground or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So your high point's here, your low point's here. So your grade line now is here to here.
Yeah.
This is here to here.
Right.
Well, you know, I think this definition that John Michael sent us would answer that though. Because of the cross, any cross section taken in any spot on the house.
Cross section is usually a straight line right through.
That, and that's what it says, yeah.
Read, Laurie, from your email there, read it, read it.
Okay, no ridge, eve. Okay, no ridge, eve, or gable. Shall exceed thirty-five feet. In height. Above the natural grade reference line. In any given cross section through the building.
Okay, reference line in any.
Given cross section.
Cross section?
Given cross section.
Okay.
Um, through the building.
Through. Through the building?
Yes. And then he defines natural grade reference line. Which is exactly what you were saying in your definition, Ted, but, yeah. Two points, opposite set, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, natural grade reference line is defined by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building. Period?
Using the elevation of the natural grade.
I almost. I connected two points. On opposite sides of the building. Trying to think of. By using two points. Of the adjoining natural grade on opposite sides of the building. Using, maybe that's, no, or so.
Now, now we're.
Any two points on, picking where it's adjoining the building. But that, that makes sense.
And don't we really have to go the reference line? From the highest natural grade to the lowest natural grade?
Say that again?
You just don't want the building to be, our, our whole goal here, right, is so the building in general is not sticking more than thirty-five feet above the natural grade. Anywhere around the house. So, in that case, that's where this definition helps out a little bit. Because if you're doing cross sections, no point anywhere around the house can be thirty-five feet above.
If we say.
The natural grade.
Yeah.
Which means they could, possibly here, one side a little higher and the other side or. You know, different rooftiles around, just as long as anywhere where the natural grade joins it. I think this, I think this works, maybe.
I think we're getting very close.
Yeah.
It's not a plane, but this, this isn't a plane.
Right. We have basically building in any number of cross sections.
So are we incorporating, are we thinking maybe incorporating this into portions or part of the Park City ordinance? Or using this as the ordinance? Is, is there enough there to use, or do we need to? No, I think we still need to. Incorporate it, not use it exclusively. So where. Where would we? Include it at what point? We start off. Saying that the height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure. Can we speak to the natural grade plane directly below that point?
Well, now we'd say the natural grade reference line.
Okay, that'd be appropriate statement. Height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line. Directly below that point, yes.
Let me see that one more time.
Okay, the height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure. To the natural grade reference line below that point. Now later on, we're going to define what that natural grade reference line is.
Okay.
In fact, that's where maybe we'd insert that in the next sentence. Instead of what's there. The natural grade reference line is defined by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building. Using the elevation of the natural grade. And I think we would need to depict that with a picture.
Okay, I think when you talk about the point on the roof and you're measuring to the line. You still have to say straight down or directly below because you're measuring to the line which could come from here, here, or here.
Okay, well, we said directly below.
Did it say directly below?
Yes.
Okay, then we're good.
The height of the building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line directly below that point.
There's the point. Right below it. To the reference line.
But you're kind of measuring to a point on the line, not the line itself. Is that too, am I being too mathy?
To the natural grade reference line.
Maybe there's a point where we get too.
Too technical? Yeah.
Could I make a comment here?
Let us work through this for a minute before my mind gets muddled up.
I wanted, I wanted to, uh, comment on the idea of a reference line or versus a reference plane. You know, it's actually much more complicated than that. Because, think of it this way, let's say you had a plane that you defined, and then you dropped cloth on that plane. Just drop it on there, and what happens? The cloth has all kinds of ridges and, and ups and downs in it and so forth. That's really what the natural reference line could be. And let me just mention, let's say you had a sinkhole right underneath your building, okay? And yet, no, your average, your sort of average plane even find the way John Michael says, which is, which is an improvement. Even, even with that, you got someplace in the house where it's going to be maybe five feet down lower than that line. And so. I don't know how you account for that kind of thing, but it's much more complicated.
Straight line.
Yeah, it's a reference, the, the, the house is not taken into consideration, it's a reference line from. Where the natural grade touches the house on one side to where the natural grade very touches the house on the other side. The house drops five feet or whatever, doesn't really matter. From that line, cross section is what he calls it, of one side of the house.
Yeah, I think the cross section.
Yeah.
Addresses that. So, okay, so.
I mean, and we're going to dig that out anyway, probably.
You're right.
For the baseline.
That's why we call it a cross section or.
So it would take out the natural grade plane as a reference plane determined by a straight line from the natural ground level. Adjoining the building exterior on opposite sides. Now it says prior to any construction or land disturbance. Maybe we want to get that construction and land disturbance in another. Area with. Finding natural grade.
I think it fits there.
But we don't want, it, it wouldn't be, it would be included in this particular sentence though. The natural grade plane is a reference plane determined by a straight line from the ground. From the natural ground level adjoining the building exterior. In the, on opposite sides prior to any construction or land disturbance. First part of that we want to, to get rid of because we're now talking not the natural grade plane, but the. the natural grade reference line is defined by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building using the elevation of the natural grade, which is prior to any construction or land disturbance.
Yes.
And I almost wanted to say by connecting two points where the natural grade adjoins the building on opposite sides using the elevation of the natural grade.
Are we confusing it?
Yeah, that seems to make it more complicated.
Well, right now it says opposite sides of the building, says by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building.
Could you, you're feeling you need to say exterior, opposite. Exterior, opposite sides.
And this is not me, I understand what you're saying, I'm just thinking of someone coming down the road.
I know, and that's what we need to think about.
They're going to say, well, you said two points on opposite side of the building, so I'm picking a point up on this hill, a point up on this hill. And that's going to be my length.
That's what it means could be the highest natural grade around the structure to the lowest natural grade around the structure.
Where it joins the structure.
Yeah.
Right on the perimeter of the structure? Is that?
Could be.
Is that?
That word adjoining is, is I think, meaning, just means really clear. That doesn't leave any question mark, that actually came from the number one. Because that doesn't leave any question mark around the structure and the building envelope, all those at two reference points, all those, to me, these question marks are exactly where you want those.
Yeah.
Which is what we have in front of our permit right now, when it's in the building. Where you want that to be at. So I think if we just add the word in there, like joining the structure, no question on where your, that point is.
Right. And Lauren, Lauren's definition talked about structure. And that's what we want to do, it's talking about where the structure really is. A point here on the structure to a point here on the structure, this is the high point on the structure, this is the low point around the structure. And between that two is our reference line.
Okay, let me back up here. The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line directly below that point. The natural grade reference line is defined by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building using the elevation of the natural grade defined as, provided a construction or land disturbance. Now we're talking about adjacent.
Right, right there again, that was a good spot to say. We've got lots.
I, I still think we need to say high and low somewhere in there. We haven't done that, we've talked about elevation, but we didn't say the highest elevation to the lowest elevation.
Well, in this case, we're saying every elevation. So we, you would include the high and low, but it's, it's a cross-section anywhere in your house.
Yeah, cross-section kind of.
So we have to pick up, I hope it's everywhere.
Let's see, so, natural grade reference line is defined by connecting two points on opposite sides of the building
I'm just trying to think how, when I review a site plan, how am I going to determine? I mean, the site plan's got the elevation, the natural grade is on there. So I know where the highest point that touches the edge of the structure is. And I know where the lowest point is on the structure. And so those are the two points that I'm going to have my reference line between.
You'll have those two points, you'll have the next two points next to those, the next two points next to those, the next two points. Now where could that roof, when we work thirty-five feet above those?
We're making it too complicated. How are we going to calculate all that?
I think you picked three or four spots on the roof, I mean, we're talking, no, we're not talking every spot on the roof, right?
But if we just spent the high and the low.
Of the elevation.
Of the elevation, then.
Three different spots on the roof.
Everything else is going to either be higher than that, and nothing's going to be lower than that. If you've got the high point here and the low point there, nothing is going to be lower than the low point, nothing's going to be higher than the high point.
The low doesn't matter.
High point, low point.
Low point, that's where we're measuring from, the lowest point.
The way it is now, we measure it from the lowest point.
Lowest natural.
Now we say we're using the high point and the low point, drawing a reference line, and we've got thirty-five feet up from those, and that's where the building has to be within.
Where would that not work?
What if you have a?
Is there any situation where it wouldn't work?
What if you have a natural ground that this? Your low point's here and your high point's here, but your house is going to span all the way.
Okay.
Well, you're measuring from the outside of the structure. The highest point on the outside of the structure to the lowest point on the outside of the structure. Anything in between
Doesn't matter.
doesn't make any difference.
Wait a minute.
You may have a hill in between.
What if the, so you've got something like this, your structure's coming across this, and the lowest point against your structure would be right in the middle of the house, your highest point's on that side.
But, but it's on the outside of the structure.
Well, if it's on the outside of the structure, that's fine.
Well, that's fine, but then the building's not going to go beyond it because then it's not on the outside of the structure.
What do you mean?
It's on the inside of the structure.
Define outside.
Perimeter.
The perimeter.
So you have four, four sides.
Well, at least four.
Yeah.
In many houses, you've got ten or twelve.
So what if you're looking at low point here and a high point here, and it's only halfway in the house?
But it's got to be on the outside.
Well, it is on the outside. Your house.
So on the.
Sitting like this. Right here, that's your square house, your low point here and your high point here.
That's like my house.
So on the outside edges, the outside edges, the house would be thirty-five feet high, and in the middle it would be?
It's, it's going to be higher.
Higher.
It's in between the two, everything else is going to be in between the two around that structure.
Then we come back to the issue of a plane.
Yeah. That, that, that one feels a bit.
To avoid the dip, you've got a big dip in the middle, you're saying that that part of the house
The house would dip.
can't be more than thirty-five feet, so it's got a dip. Two.
That's why, if there's a low point, and you say thirty-five feet from the natural grade, then all of a sudden it can only be this high, and it's less than thirty feet.
I think you've got to define, that's got to be, that's almost comes backwards, opposite side of the house.
That's why high and low.
That's almost where it comes back to being opposite side of the house. The low point and the high point opposite side. Or you have to be.
And that was the idea of a plane.
Generally speaking, it's going to be on the opposite side of the house. Yes, it's got to be.
Could be in the middle.
Could be in the middle.
No.
Why?
Because it's not on the outside of the structure.
That's the outside of the structure.
But then, but then we need to, it's.
See what I mean, you've got to define that point.
No, I don't agree.
See, the part, well, that's the part, that's the essence of the Park City ordinance though. Anywhere in that structure, wherever that footprint is.
But once again, that goes to a high point and a low point. The fact that it's in the middle of the back wall doesn't make any difference.
So does that mean what happens to the other side of the house?
It's going to be either high, it's not going to be lower than that point because that's the low point.
So now your house sits like this, comes down here, and you know the natural grade on this side's here, your house can walk from here. So you've got to cut.
No, 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 no. The, the house doesn't move from that footprint that you drew.
Go show.
Put a number, thirty-five on the edge and fifteen on the.
I don't know how to, yeah, I don't know how to draw this in three-dimensional, I think that's why it's not going to be seen.
I, I subscribe to my house. The front of my house is relatively straight across the front, it dips a little bit on the west side. On the east side, it's pretty flat, and then it starts along the back and it's flat, and then it drops like mad. And the low point is back on that west, north corner of my house, okay? So it, it slopes that way. Everything slopes that way. So we, that's the low point, back in that corner. The high point is up in this corner, it could be anywhere along here or along here. And any of those are still high. Nothing's going to be lower than that point, nothing's going to be higher than this point. And so the reference line goes from this point to the low point.
Where's your house at? Where's your house sitting?
The house sits like this.
So it's going across your house.
Yeah.
What, what if that low point was in the mid of your, middle of your house?
The front door.
What if that low point was in the middle of where you wanted to set your house?
Doesn't make any difference. Then, if the low point is over here, the high point's here, it's still the same thing. You still have the same parallelogram that you have to have the house in. Wherever that low point is around the structure.
So.
I really was a math major one time, I want to know that.
So if we drew a plane, what do we call it? Footprint plane, what is it? Natural grade plane?
Natural grade plane.
Grade plane, whatever, if we drew that at your house, would your roof fit within that?
Mine is built under the old standard. I, yeah, I was looking at mine this morning, and I don't know whether mine would pass into this, but I, I did go out and measure to see how tall it was up to the top.
There's your front door. Here's your high point, right here, this back corner of the house, here's your low point. You're saying you're going to draw your natural grade line like that.
No. No.
It would be twenty-five feet above the, above the high.
And that's the low point? So the natural grade line is there?
Right.
Yeah.
So what about this side? Where's your, it's like your house.
But if.
So you're twenty-five feet above.
And this is the low, everything else is going to be either higher than this or higher than this.
So we see, here's your grade line, right here.
That goes thirty-five feet around.
Thirty-five feet, right, here's your plane right here. But you're saying on this side, on all, might can only be this elevation on this side of the house. So my roof has to be like this. You can't go outside of that one. There's my low point. Yeah, probably I have to draw my grade line because it's not all the way across my house. It went through a portion of my house, not all the way. So here comes my grade line like this. Now this side of my house may not want to be able to stick up, so it can be above the natural grade. Because maybe I've got fifteen feet there. So I'm saying it's almost got to be a cross-section through, all the way through the house in order to get it to work out at any point. I'm sorry. That's right, it works well if you're thinking opposite sides of the house, but when you're not, it becomes challenging. That's why I think cross-sections.
But I think our purpose is to not have houses block the views and stick within that thirty-five foot range, no matter whether we're in a bowl or not, so technically, if we were building right there, we would want the middle of the house to drop down and have two angled modern roof lines that go up on the sides if they want.
How, how do we avoid something like this? Even if we use cross-section, we've still got a cross-section in, in the front of the house there where there's a dip.
Yeah.
And we're saying it can't be taller than thirty-five feet up.
So some.
The high and the low on opposite sides of the house.
So that, that, that opposite side is critical to the definition for what we want to portray.
Somehow you've got to do the average and, you know.
Now we're using contour lines.
No, not average.
Well, we have to somehow put in a flat plane on ground that is moving.
Yeah. I mean, even in that situation. If you really did the plane. If you really did the plane, if this is the low point, and this is the point, and there's another point right here, this is really the plane there.
Somehow we want to get four points that enclose most of the house and make a plane from those four points.
We're going to have to, they're going to have someone going to go to the hills, they're going to hire a HD math guy. We're just going to do complicated.
That, that's, I mean.
I think the picture's got the, it's, it's just got to be either a cross-section or a straight line through the house, opposite sides or something like that. You could say a high point and a low point, opposite sides of the house, I don't know, right?
Well, and that might work.
Yeah. And.
High point, low point, the opposite side, I mean, I could probably, on my house, even though that corner I view as the low point, I can actually go to the midpoint of the house and it's the same elevation. And so, if I went through a cross-section from the high side to the low side as opposed to the high point to the low point, or from the high side to the low side, maybe that takes care of it.
If you did high side and low side, I mean, the whole length of one of the sides and then one of the, the higher side and the lower side, that might enclose enough to get a good, yeah.
And the lowest elevation, opposite side.
Yeah. Does the elevation mean the whole edge of, one of your edges of your house?
I mean, some, I mean, in my house, it's front to back, but in other houses, like, let's say the Larson's house over on Grizzly Peak, it's really from the east side to the west side of the house is where the slope goes. And so it goes across the front of the house.
We might be getting too picky because if somebody built on that house, all the runoff would go right into their house.
Yeah, they would.
Here, I want it to down.
It'd seem better, huh? It does seem better.
That's weird.
Natural grade.
Oh.
And draw that line, that line then becomes.
From one side to the other side.
To the other side of the house. Then that, whatever that.
Because that's.
Do we make that contour?
Yeah, yeah, because that's still.
This is what we're trying to do, right?
Because we're trying to, you know, within that thirty-five feet above that.
Well, in, on the picture, the front would be the low side, and then the back would be the high side. And it, it all falls in that.
Whatever, let's call it a building footprint. We all know, all understand what the footprint is.
The rim of the house.
The outside of the building. We take the high point along that, where that footprint is, and the low point.
On the opposite side.
On the opposite.
High points or sides? High side, low side?
Well, high side, low side, let's say, because that gives us our.
Little more run.
Our defined, defined line there.
Yeah.
And we just, and we move that, that's what we want to do, we move, want to move that through the whole footprint of the house and use that. So wherever along, again, that's our bottom line for our parallelogram. And along that can't be more than thirty-five feet to the, to the ridge. In concept, that's what we're, that's what we want to say.
Can I just bring a lead in? Really invent a deal with that?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I'm going to just read one of the one of the. Not moving those.
Well, they're measuring from the corner of each of the structure, averaging that number. Well, they're measuring from the corner of each of the structure, averaging that number.
So that, that creates a straight line?
Yeah.
Because you're taking four corners, you're coming up with one average low point. Drawing that line, then you created a straight line rather than a slope.
Parallelo, parall, yeah.
And technically, you could build higher on the low side.
Yeah.
It could be almost forty, you could go forty-four.
Yeah.
That, that's one of the issues we have a little bit with the eaves and ridges, you know? That, sometimes that becomes an average. I think we need to stick with a Park City and ordinance that, I think that's, conceptually, that's what we want to, to have.
Basically, what they did is they just simplified it by saying, still give a little bit of nice on average, but they're basically just saying, you take the highest point of the house and you bring it straight down. Once again, that comes back to that.
Yeah.
Could create a little bit of a challenge with that. But Park City didn't address here.
And that's, that's the part that we're trying to...
Maybe we shouldn't. Maybe we should just leave it that way. Park City did. Let people work with their design.
If, if we, how, how could we change that by extending that to the opposite sides? Distance. Because I think that would compensate for the ups and downs within the structure, within the footprint of the structure. If we took the high, the highest natural grade and the lowest natural grade on opposite sides of the structure. Then, vertical. Then the footprint of that structure can't be more than thirty-five feet. If we took that high-low point and just picture a piece of plane on mine and just... Across the, the natural grade. You fill in here, take the little shape on here, whatever, but you're using that highest and the natural point.
That might be as close as we're going to get.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, I think with, with this other suggestion, I think we're... It's gonna throw us off a little bit. I guess I'm coming back a little bit to still, to original.
Park City was not bad.
No, it's just all that one thing. We need to address that. Best way, best way of doing that.
How long does Park City use that?
I think for a long time.
There's others I've seen that are fairly close to Park City's. So I think maybe we're just kind of getting too...
Yeah.
Height of the buildings measured from any of those points of the roof, reduce that peak's on the structure to the natural grade directly. Let's just use natural grade. Natural grade directly below that point.
I think you gotta say the highest elevation on one side to the lowest elevation on the opposite side or something along those lines.
Yeah. Or diagonal. Possibly.
Opposite side. By selecting the highest natural, you almost gotta select the highest natural grade or ground, adjoining the structure, and then the lowest opposite that.
Joining the structure.
Joining the structure and then the lowest point opposite that. When before you, because we're talking plan, right? We're talking, so you're, and you should have the topo of the natural grade on your plan, your site plan, and so, yeah. Yeah. Opposite that, yeah. Lowest natural point opposite that.
Before you disturb anything.
So the lateral, natural lowest point opposite that high point.
I think the reference line is grade. Me, I mean, it's a grade, not a point.
But you're picking two points to determine that grade.
It's still a grade reference, okay, line.
It's a grade reference line, but you're picking two points to get that line. You're picking the highest point and the lowest point opposite the high point to get that line.
And then when you measure the high, it's from the highest peak down to where, what, what point on that reference line is directly below the highest point, and it cannot exceed thirty-five feet.
Someone died on me, Joe.
Okay, the natural highest? Excuse me. The highest natural?
We're looking for a point. But I think we gotta say point. Right. Well, they're, they're points, not, not grade. Grade is talking about a slope. Point is a spot you're picking on two sides to develop that grade line, which is a sloped line. Didn't, yeah.
Is it, correct to refer to as a grade point? Highest natural grade.
Yeah, you could say that. Natural grade, because that's talking about grade point. Natural grade point, yeah.
I should agree with that one. Okay, the highest natural grade point joining the structure on one side to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite.
Side. Yep. Which would be, I think it'd be, the okay, the only...
Even though it's skew office, so to speak, that, that's our...
But I think that's, I think that's okay, right?
Yeah.
Because...
That's the point I was making earlier. That, that slope is less than directly from the bottom. Because this, this is a lot greater, this slope would be less than this slope. No. But this is the highest point.
That's right.
And that's the lowest point. Everything else is lower than that or higher than that. I agree.
Which is all we're looking for, really. I get your point, Larry, but I'm wondering if it, and I get what you're saying. I'm just wondering if it matters.
Can't be.
It would be more steep.
But does that really... Does, does that matter when we're talking roof height?
I don't care.
I, I don't know that matters. The slope will change, but the ultimate, what we're trying to do is keep the house up. Steeper or sharper. Point is going to be a reference point that the roof can't go above. I mean, we could build this...
As you may, a house, it has different kinds of sides and where do you, you know, where do you, where's the opposite from, from that? So I think we just take the highest and the lowest.
For that reference.
Yeah. Okay, soon we do that. So then, we've got that kind of, it's a second sentence. Height of the roof, first sentence. Height of the roof is measured from any of the points of the roof. Reduce that peak's on the structure to the natural grade directly below the highest.
But isn't it to the natural grade reference?
Natural reference point, line. Natural grade reference.
Line. Line, yeah.
I was reading that definit, that, that John Michael sent again.
So I'm structuring to the natural grade, so that point. Now, like, the highest natural grade point to join the...
I think we need a...
The structure on one side to the, to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite side. Talking about a lot.
Yes. And then we say the highest point on one side to the lowest point on the other side.
Lowest natural grade point. Natural grade reference line.
It's not in there. It's not in there yet. That was in another part, another definition that we're going to use from Jen Michael. We include it all in there.
The undisturbed ground before, is that what we had?
Yeah. Grade prior to construction or land disturbance.
Undisturbed ground prior to disturbance. Construction or whatever.
Hey, Wayne?
Just a minute, Steve. And it says, these points are located on the site plan and the elevation of the natural grade in natural grade reference line. These points are located on the site plan and the elevation of the natural grade planes used before directly below those points is subtracted from the elevation of the points on the ridges and peaks, thus indicating a height above the natural grade.
Is that necessary now?
I think we need to, you know. These points are... Said at these points, we're talking about the, what, natural grade point located on the site plan. And elevation to the natural grade... And elevation to the natural grade point. Natural grade reference line. Steve, go ahead. Steve Dicker, did you have a comment?
Wayne, it sounds like you guys are on recess, because we can't hear you at all. So, you know, there's no snoring, there's no verbalization, there's no nothing. We just, we get quiet for most of the time.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can, but there's, there's moments where it'll, the audio will go off for, you know, two, three minutes. So, I guess, I don't know whether Jody's there, and we can take a look at the mics, but it's... You know, it's really hard for us to try to follow the conversation and what you're talking about every, you know, for the most part. Just, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, we just maybe need to stay closer to the microphone here. Can you hear that all? Can you hear me speaking now?
We can, and I think sometimes we're, yeah.
Okay, well, stay closer to the microphone and see if that helps.
Okay, and then, so if you wanna, if you wanna watch the chat, I don't know who's watching that for you, but a lot of times, you know, we can raise our hands or something if, if we can't hear you, so we don't want to disturb the conversation that you guys are doing, but there's just a lot of times we can't, we can't hear and follow the conversation, so.
Appreciate the input, well, yeah, raise your hand and we'll notice that you can't hear.
Okay, yeah, Doral says he thinks the batteries are not working in some of the mics.
They occasionally go dead and we have to switch them out. We may run out of mics before long. So, we may be going dead silent for a while.
Okay.
Okay, so, thanks for that, and I guess, you know, don't, don't rely on me to raise my hand, you know, anybody can do that, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we've got it here. "In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of a roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet in a vertical straight line..." Let's say directly above the, what do we want to call it, natural... Natural grade reference line?
Yeah.
Okay, "Above the natural grade reference line. Flat roofs must be no more than 30 feet above natural grade." Then the last sentence says, "These points are located on the site plan, and the elevation of the natural grade directly below those points is subtracted from the elevation of the points along the ridges and peaks, thus indicating the height above natural grade..." Do we want to say reference line again? Okay. Let me, let me take a stab at this, I'm like scribbling here. "The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof, ridges, and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line..." Point.
Line.
"Natural grade reference line, period." "Natural grade is defined as..." "...the grade prior to any construction or land disturbance." "A natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjoining the structure on one side to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite side of the structure. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of a roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet in a vertical straight line drawn above the natural grade reference line." These points, and roof, flat roofs must not be more than 30 feet above natural grade.
Reference line.
Reference line. "These points are located on the site plan, and the elevation to the natural grade directly below those points..." Do we want to say natural grade reference line again? "These points are located on the site plan, and the elevation of the natural grade reference line directly below those points is subtracted from the elevation of the points along the ridges and peaks, thus indicating the height above the natural grade reference line."
If you can send that to me, Wayne, I'll just send it to our architect and just say, "If you read this, would you, would it make sense to you?"
Possibly another meeting next week to finalize this, after we've gotten input from, from those sources to the wording. Or...
I'm fine with that.
Are you? Okay.
Yeah.
Are you all good with that? Okay.
And if you can send it to us also.
Yeah, oh yeah. Okay.
I think we're PDC.
I hope so.
Okay, now, are we going to add anything about the finished grade to adjust the digging out?
What do you think?
I wouldn't mind having something that addresses that. In fact, I think it's a good idea.
Uh huh, I'd agree.
I don't think it has to be more than a couple of sentences, probably.
Right. Here's what Park City says, "This is the zone, see, final grade must be within four vertical feet of existing grade, except for replacement of approved window wells, an emergency egress, and a garage entrance." I don't know if we need all that, but it's basically, they say four feet. I don't know if that's sufficient, or if you have...
What do you think we ought to suggest as a... Dig down, 10 feet?
Yeah, some of the building that they've done, that I'm cognizant of in the last couple of years, they've dug as much as, like you said, 20 or 30 feet down.
Well, we've, we've seen that, and homes here, already.
But again, depending on the architecture and landscape, it may blend in well with the existing, I mean, I've seen several that have dug down 30, 35 feet even.
And left a 30-foot wall of...
Well, what happened was, of course, they had a full basement, so they filled that in, and then they had a wall behind that, maybe 30, 40 feet, and had a, maybe an eight-feet wall of some large rocks or something to blend in, and then slope that with, to me, it looks great.
So, that was the case, and would you need a, because if they're gonna dig 35 feet, I... I mean, if we set a no more than 35 foot, I wouldn't even see a need for that in the ordinance, really, I mean, it's...
I mean, we're setting a kind of a standard. We're saying you can't do that anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, for this particular property, it, it worked well. They, they left a lot of vegetation in front, driveway wrapped around the vegetation, where they dug this out and then leveled, they built up the sides and the back.
Not everybody will do that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So... Now, if, if we have this ordinance that prohibits that, will somebody be able to still ask for a variance and show their plan, so they will not, okay?
No. No. Variances are pretty strict.
There are specific reasons for...
Yeah, yeah. And it's not like, this'll look nice, that's, or...
It's not the reason.
The economy of things, that's not accepted.
Now, now, to go along with that, you start digging down more than 10, 12 feet, your cost of excavation is going to skyrocket. I mean, it, it's very expensive to dig and haul an awful lot of material.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not talking 10, 20,000, I'm talking 50, 100, $120,000 just to move dirt.
And I've seen some do it up here, and that's...
Yeah, some of them upwards of 100,000 to make down. We're saying, this is, this is how we want our community to look, and, and this is one way that we're going to do to try to accomplish that with this limit.
Build with the slopes rather than dig all these holes.
Exactly. So... Lori, why don't, why don't you craft something up? And then, when we get together again with, however, we end up with this, that should be easy enough to add, and we can include that in with our recommendation. And so that, send that around to everybody, too.
How much different than what she's already crafted does it need to be?
I don't think much. I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Lori.
And I think it may not hurt to take a day or two and just, I'm always the one who likes to run through some scenarios, because I think four feet may be a little too restrictive for some up here, maybe difficult for them to build. But what is that good number? Where are we not getting too restrictive, but yet still keeping, encouraging homes to build with slopes? I might take a day or two of playing around with that.
Looking at it a little bit.
Yeah. Doing some different scenarios, kind of like I was doing with the slopes on, where this proposed in old ordinance kind of balance.
I mean, we may want to put in there, instead of natural, within four vertical feet of natural grade, use the natural grade reference line again. Because remember, the natural grade could be like this.
Yeah. Something good to think about.
Yeah.
Maybe we toy around with that for a couple of days.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Very well. Okay. Next.
We go to five?
Go to five. Discussion and recommendation on change on gating on public streets. Your thoughts?
Well, I, I thought that you gave us some very interesting information, that the gates, as you look over what happened, are actually property of the city, not the HOA.
It would appear so. Have they been built?
On public roads.
Yeah, they've built on right-of-way, on a public road, and as such, they're really property of the city. Although, say this, the city, over the last number of years, seemed to have relinquished by...
Not doing anything.
But yeah, by not doing anything about it, and Summit Creek has controlled them and...
And taken care of.
And taken care of, and upkeep, and everything, so.
And have also maintained the right-of-ways where the drainage, the rock drainage systems are, to their credit.
Yes. Let's, from your, each of your notes, a little bit, share your, what you found with other cities and gates on, on public roads. I've, I haven't compiled it, but I know each of you had some assignments that could maybe get you to report on.
I had Saratoga Springs and Maplethorn. Maplethorn doesn't allow gates anywhere. They do not allow gated communities, period. Saratoga Springs does allow gated communities. They do allow private streets, but no gates on private streets.
But where do they allow gates then?
On public streets.
They don't allow gates on public streets either?
No.
I misunderstood, did you say they...
Yeah, so they don't have gated communities.
It said they allowed gated communities, and I know that isn't what it said.
But they don't have it.
But they don't allow gates.
Yeah, actually, there are over 40 gated communities that I'm aware of in Utah County, but most of them don't have gates, even though they're called gated communities.
What do they have that qualifies them for a gated community? Any idea?
Some of them, yes, some of them have HOAs, and, and actually have private streets instead of public streets, but again, no gates.
Do they kind of refer to those entities then as gated community?
Yes.
Just because they got private, private streets in them and some restriction there? Okay, interesting.
And you had a couple, did you have something else you wanted to say, Severin, before I jumped in there? I was trying to find my email from Saratoga Springs. Go ahead. While he's looking for that, I was, I was... Salem, Spanish Fork, and Orem. I'm actually exploring with the Utah, Utah Valley Home Builders Association, and seeing if their director will explore this with some of the cities as well, to get feedback, because they have connections with contractors and developers, as well as cities, to get some input. I could find no private gates on public roads in cities, towns, or communities, but like you found, when you looked up, the counties in the state of Utah are allowed through either a commissioner or a street supervisor, manager, to allow private citizens to put up gates on county roads.
And I can maybe explain, because I talked to, Utah County, not other counties, about why that happens, but I can, I can give you their description in a minute.
Yeah, they, the ones I talked to said, one, some of those roads are closed during the winter.
Right, they're seasonal gates is usually what they are.
And others, because of cattle or other animals, are allowed to put in a private gate.
And they are, if they are on a county road, Utah County anyway, they own, maintain those gates, and they have to be approved about every two years, they have to go back through the approval process, even if they're existing. If there are residents behind the gates, they will often give them a key, so they can get in and out. So they can lock it, but they mostly put them up for seasonal, or like you said, livestock or something like that.
The others, the code says that those gates cannot be locked, except under certain conditions. And the person that decides, again, is the county roads person.
In Utah County, it's the commissioners that have to determine that. According to their, I called their public works director and talked to him, because we're working with them on some other stuff.
Okay. What cities did you have, Larry?
I had Salem, Spanish Fork, and Orem.
And so?
And I, again, they have gated communities, but I'm still trying to determine if they allow for gates that are keyed, or have a card or something that will allow exit and entry.
So all those cities have gated communities?
They do, but I couldn't...
Whether they have gates on them is a question.
Orem does have gates, private gated communities.
Do they have gates on public roads?
None of these communities had gates on public roads.
Okay, okay. Lori, what did you...
Okay, I had Payson, Provo, and Park City. And Payson does not have any gated communities. They did have a new development by the Temple Heritage Village that wanted to be gated, but because of public roads, fire access, access to adjacent lots, they were prevented from pursuing it. That's what they said.
Now, you did mention that certain locations, such as a cemetery, does have...
Yeah, Provo, that's the...
That's because people die.
...gates on public roads. In the cemetery.
We don't want them out.
I think, I think Payson has a gate too, but they didn't mention that.
Their attempt to stop the zombie apocalypse.
But, and then Provo, I had a hard time finding anyone who could help me, but they do have gated communities, and one thing they told me is that the public roads have green street signs in Provo, and the private roads have a blue street sign. And so I drove around to look at a few of the gated communities, and they did have a blue street sign which indicates a private road, and their gates were open, which I thought was interesting.
They have gates.
They have gates.
But they're open.
And they all happened to be open when I drove there.
But then all the private roads?
They were private roads.
Roads on gates, okay.
Yes, and then Park City does not allow gates on public roads, and they have a big, long, page-long explanation of gates and when they can be used, and, but not on public roads.
Okay.
And I did find a city in Florida who has put gates on their public roads to prevent traffic from cutting through their community, and they're being sued, so...
By the citizens?
Yeah, I can't remember who it was. Yeah, I think there was construction going on, and so people were cutting through this small town, and the town itself put gates on their roads with, kinda like a garage door opener for the citizens, and they were being sued. But they did quote their Florida's state law that said that a city does have the right to gate, they didn't say gate, they said to handle traffic in a way that is conducive to help their citizens, and it had certain requirements.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Ted?
Yes, I had UDOT, Springville, and Lehigh. And Springville, I still haven't heard from, I left a message with him, and I'll eventually get, we work with him quite a bit, but he's always tough to get to return phone calls, but I did talk to Lehigh, same thing, you know, as most of the cities, they don't allow gates on public roads. Didn't get hold of anybody at UDOT that could answer the question. We work quite a bit with UDOT, and I know they don't usually allow anything in a right-of-way that isn't theirs, unless it's grand, we've had that, because I've had to go through them to try and get a pipeline installed along Bangater Highway, the only way we got it there was because it was grandfathered in, because it was there before Bangeter. Other than that, they won't let, usually let anything come into their right-of-way that isn't theirs. So I would doubt they would put a gate there, almost certain, they probably wouldn't, unless, like going up canyons and stuff where they have those seasonal gates. Same with Utah County, they weren't on my list, but I spoke with Utah County, just because, once again, we've worked with them, letting, I was talking to them the other day and asked him, same thing, they have some county roads that have gates for seasonal use, like Birds Eye and stuff like that, so they can close them during the winter. They do have citizens that live behind them, and they give those guys keys, but the gates own, maintain, or the county own, maintain, operate everything in the gates, and take the liability. That was the biggest comment I was getting back from cities, because I not only asked them, "Do you?", I was asking, "Why wouldn't you allow it?". And some of them were emergency access and whatever, which, I don't know that that really, and I understand the citizens, you know, in Summit Creek, they want security, a feeling of security, get what they bought, and that, I don't have any issues with that. The biggest thing that they commented on was just the liability. Why would we as a city want that liability? Because if something happens to someone because of that gate, they're gonna sue the city, right? And that was their biggest reason why, just the liability that comes with it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your research and looking into that. Help us whether decide where, what kind of recommendation we want to make. What are your general thoughts on, on the gates on Summit Creek?
Okay, I really would like to see Summit Creek have gates, I feel that that is what the residents bought, that what they were told, and they, I sense that they have a very strong desire to have gates, but I don't think we can allow it because the road is public.
I, same, I really would like to see the residents get what they bought, or what they were told, when they bought and stuff like that, and I really don't have as big issues with the gates for just general people traveling in and out of, from the city, you know, sometimes residents, when they used to close, were worried because it slowed them down or whatever. I was good with all that, and I don't have any issue with any of that. My, my only concern was just the liability the city takes on with those gates being on a public road, and now if something happens and the city gets sued because of those, now it's everybody in the city is paying for that lawsuit, right? Rather than just the people in Summit Creek. So is that fair to everyone else in the community to accept that liability? Not to say there would ever be, you know, it's, they've been there a long time, nothing's really happened other than I heard one car got damaged or something, but never got reported to Summit Creek or the, but if it ever did, now that's something the whole community is taking on, rather than just those in Summit Creek. That would be my only hesitation. Other than that, I don't, I mean, other reasons don't concern me as much, other than that, I don't, don't want others in the city paying for something that, you know, is there for the Summit Creek folks.
Lori?
Speaking specifically again, I haven't really changed my mind in three years. I've been acquainted with this challenge and this issue. Summit Creek now is a public road, it was deeded to the city, and, and I don't feel comfortable having gates on public roads. I know that the developers have also asked us to consider gates on private roads, and I am not opposed to that at all. I talked to my son today, who lived in a gated community for many years. He actually did not like it. His reason was that the homeowners association, even though they are supposed to take care of those facilities, at least in the gated community in which he lived, that wasn't always the case. And so, but again, those homeowner associations, if they want to keep that private road, and if they want a gate to protect themselves, or whatever reason, I'm not opposed to that, but I am opposed to gates on, on public thoroughfares. I might even be arm-twisted a little bit if, if a public road were a cul-de-sac, and we do have gates here in the city to protect city roads and city property, and, and I think that's necessary. So if, if a few citizens wanted to buy the public road and, and have a little cul-de-sac and have a gate on it, I, I could consider that.
Severin?
I don't know how I feel. I, I understand the citizens in, in Summit Creek's concern about safety, the speed of the traffic that goes through there, but I don't think the gates really impact that that much. I mean, somebody said they're slowed down for the gate, and they speed up to make up the time they lost waiting for the gate to open. I think the proposed raised bridges, as they call it, will probably do more to slow down the traffic if, if those are approved, than will the gates, and so, as a monument, I don't have any problem with them. I, I feel better about them being open than being operational.
Okay.
Another consideration though, is because Summit Creek is the city's road, it's our responsibility to install those hubs or bumps or whatever you wanna call them, it's not Summit Creek's responsibility.
Yeah, that's right.
That's true.
As it is to maintain the gates. I mean, if they're non-functional, they're relatively easy to maintain, but they need to be kept, kept looking good and nice and everything else that, painted from time to time, if that's what's needed, or, you know, whatever to...
And, and as far as speed too, I know one thing, I did some reading on deterrence to speed, one thing that also works is, are these portable solar-powered speed signs that tell you how fast you're going.
There's one in Summit Creek now, on the road over there that they put, so, it's a reminder.
Yeah, and...
And most of the time, I'm only one or two miles over the speed limit.
There's been some talk of reducing the speed limit over there, and maybe even throughout the city, by five miles an hour, you know?
Right now, Woodland Hills Drive is thirty-five until you hit close to this area, and then it drops to twenty-five. Does it go back to thirty-five up above?
No, it stays twenty-five all the way up.
It stays twenty-five all the way up. And very few people obey that limit.
Yeah.
That's true.
But you know, if it were five miles an hour more, people would drive, get five miles an hour on top of what they're driving now. I think they've been studies to do that, so, the more you push it down, people still may speed, but not as much, and just, you know, way we are, I guess.
Sure.
Well, I have some, I have some reservations as well with, with gating a public street. I think we're, I think we set a, not a good precedent overall with it. I, to me, electronics can always go bad. I know that maybe we've never had a problem, but the first time we have a problem and the gate just refuses to open, I mean, you're gonna get, if it's a fire engine, he's probably gonna bust the gate through, and, but they're gonna take a while to get through that, regardless, or, or an ambulance. I, I just, I don't have any problem with the monuments, and the gate there is a monument, they're very attractive, and I think they really set the area off, but as far as a functioning gate, I, I have my reservations about allowing that, so. Any further discussion before we take a motion? Anybody, any other comments or discussion?
I hate speed bumps.
Yeah?
You do go slower, right?
Yeah, but when you only go five miles an hour over them, Lori, you know, they're not too bad.
I had to drive over them every day.
The ones they disable are not these speed bumps. They like are an intersection law, so you go up, and across, and then go down.
Can you catch air off of them?
It's not, bam! If you go, bam, bam, there's some air.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation to the city council regarding gating, however you want to...
I recommend that the gates on public streets, which would be on Summit Creek Drive, remain open and are not allowed to be closed.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that'll be our recommendation then to the city council.
Now, in our last meeting, we did make a recommendation for private streets...
We did.
...for the ordinance to be changed. We also made a recommendation, or at least discussion about allowing gates on private streets.
We made a recommendation for that as well.
Right.
So the city council will have a public hearing on that, as we did, in April, and then they will take that to discussion and make a decision on those three areas. So they'll take more public input, maybe similar to what we took, I don't know, more or less.
They'll also put this one on, same.
Yes, yes. Yes, but again, it'll be part of their public hearing as well. Actually, this, I guess this, this relates to changing the ordinance, because we don't presently allow, allow, so, yeah.
Or any part of...
Now, are they going to...
...Villa overlay, and you can have monuments but not offer any gates, right?
Correct, but this isn't, this, well, this isn't the Villa overlay, that's correct, so, a little different, because it's a public street, not a, not a private street. Well, what is your schedule next week, and with maybe other city meetings where we can come back together and make final decision on the building?
Winston's fine with me.
Jody, is next Wednesday open for city, for meeting?
Okay. As long as she doesn't have to come, just...
Is everybody's schedule good for next Wednesday, seven o'clock?
So we're looking at seven o'clock, that's fine.
Would that work, Jody, with you? Okay, let's plan on that then, next Wednesday, seven o'clock, and we will talk just a little bit more about our public hearing in April, some of the issues to discuss there, but we won't, won't take too long, so, at least we're getting out of here before eleven o'clock tonight.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, one and all. People, thank you for zooming in, appreciate your attendance.